Thirty-five, you're faster than I thought. I wrote down thirty-six. First item on the open agenda here is consent agenda items. Minutes of the previous meeting, singular, eleven eighteen twenty-four, we entertain a motion to approve. Move the second to approve the minutes as presented for the November the eighteenth regular meeting. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. We have a budget amendment, which I'm assuming with that dollar amount involves the turf and extra on that. Any other things we need to know on the budget amendment?
No, sir. It's just the budget amendment. It's bringing money over from the capital projects fund over into general and then paying it out.
Chair would entertain a motion to approve amendment number two.
Second.
Move the second to approve budget amendment number two. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. A discussion of action items. First item, don't have anything for hiring personnel. Consideration of possible action to approve the HB three goals. Mr. Brown?
Hey, I'm going to defer to, well, let me just talk briefly about HB three goals and then I will defer to Mrs. Hale at the end of the table. About five years ago, the legislature asked for boards to develop three goals. Two are for star in third grade and for reading level, reading and math level in third grade, and one is for CCMR. And so we, we're at the end of that five years, and so we need to re-adopt those, those goals according to statute. There is a few, maybe some good news on some of our previous goals, but I'm going to defer to Mrs. Hale to talk about that good news and then propose our new goals.
Thank you. When we started looking what the district had adopted back in two thousand nineteen, which included in two thousand twenty-four, the district had met all the goals that were established at that time. So that is, that is really great, great news. Congratulations to everyone. These current goals will go from two thousand twenty-five to two thousand twenty-nine for early childhood reading and math. It's the percent of third graders that meet. And so the forty-nine percent for the reading test is where we ended for third grade, the meets level in reading. So that's where it started from. I bumped it up a few points. Our goal this year for third grade reading is that fifty-two percent of our third graders are at that meets level. And then hopefully by two thousand twenty-nine, we're at our sixty-four percent goal. If you look at for math, same thing. I took the meets level where we ended with the twenty-four star data, bumped it up a couple of points or four actually for forty percent for the twenty-five star result.
So we were at thirty-six percent though?
Yes, sir. Hopefully we get to forty. Ideally, we want to be at the sixty percent level in the meets category in all star subjects. Again, we think the math is lower because of the curriculum we implemented last year. It did not give us the results that we were anticipating to get from it.
Yeah. Who chose that curriculum? Oh, never mind.
Sorry, Brian.
We are too.
CCMR, the following page, we are wanting to increase from seventy-seven percent. That would have been in two thousand twenty-four to ninety-three percent in two thousand twenty-nine. And based on what our projection we're seeing, they can do it.
Okay. We're tracking CCMR numbers.
Yes. Do we need a motion to approve the goal?
Need a motion to approve the HB three goal.
Motion to approve HB three goals.
Second.
Move the second to approve the HB three goals for two thousand twenty-five through two thousand twenty-nine as presented. Any additional discussion or questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Next item, consideration of possible action of approval of payment for football turf and installation.
They're already working on it, and now we got to get ready to pay their bills. So, Ms. Maraz?
I just need authorization.
Move to authorize paying for our AstroTurf.
Can you use that word? Just be careful.
Or pseudonyms for something else. I'll let Jeff come up with it.
It is AstroTurf.
Yeah. Companies do.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That is true.
All right. So motion second. Great.
Move the second to go ahead and proceed with payment for our turf replacement program. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Consideration of possible action on early resignation incentive.
This is something districts done for a couple of years, and really a lot of districts do this. They provide a cash incentive for those that would submit their resignation early. The advantage is once we, if we get early resignations, we're able to open up those positions. We know what we're hiring for when we go to job fairs. We begin to know what our staffing situation might look like for the coming year. It's the, this bonus has, I think, helped some of our teachers in the past as they're making their, you know, going into their final semester. And so my recommendation tonight is for you to approve this plan. Same thing we've done in the last several years.
Has it been effective on the recruiting side?
Having the early resignations does help because we're able to get out with positions while some of the best candidates are out in the.
But we have specific cases we can point at and say we were able to.
Yes, we know we're going to need this teacher. You have that certification. We'd like to offer you a contract.
Motion to approve. Second. Move the second to approve the early resignation incentive for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Next item, consideration of possible approval of construction design for field house at Perryton High School.
Okay, I'm going to let Greg and Peyton pass out some larger renditions of our, the plans that they've been working on. You guys remember, you know, just, just talked about from our last discussion, from our last meeting, we moved the concession stand, the, the vote was for the concession stand to be built on the north instead of the south side. From that meeting, Greg and Peyton, Josh, myself, all got together and looked at some possible designs for the north side. We have, we do have, there's, there's, as we work through this, we got several issues we need to talk through tonight. We do have an approved concession stand plan. This is one, this is a design for the, the north side that I think could incorporate the concession stand. So if we want to go with this design, we have to go through, through some parliamentary procedures. But I think there's some advantages to, there's some advantages to this field house. There's advantages to the design. I would say this as we begin this, this discussion. What is inside of this field house can still be adjusted. Josh, Josh and I have spent a lot of time with Greg and with Peyton designing, trying to get what we need for our athletic program. And this is not just our football program. This is also cross-country. This is also soccer. This is also track that will all be using this field house. Plus, all of our, all of our students will be using the weight room. Part of Josh's program centers around the weight room, and so our kids are going to be doing a lot of lifting in this, in, in this facility. But still, some of this could be adjusted. I think the main things we've got to have tonight is we've got to have location, and we really need to have the shape. We can work within the, the rest of it to do some tweaking, but we do need to come to this decision fairly quick. As it currently stands, this, probably the, the, we're going to probably have to have a plan for doing a concession stand and bathrooms in the next football season because we're getting, we're past the point where we can probably have just a separate, something separate. Or we can have a concession stand that's functioning. Might have an idea there. I'll have to ask you guys about that. But mainly what we need tonight is we need location and we need basic shape so that they can begin to bring, bring it down to some final plans, and then they can begin construction.
So we're re-
Well, with that, I'll open up a discussion of questions.
So we're revising this because the design on what we approved last meeting is insufficient, not acceptable?
So, so I'll probably, I'll probably take responsibility for that. When we, when we talked in the last meeting and the concession stand was, was decided on, then we started talking about the field house. And what I took from the meeting was that they, that there was some interest in attaching the concession stand to the field house. And so, so that's, that's kind of where we went, is to consolidate both of the, both the concession stand and the field house into one building. There is some advantage to that because it is cheaper. It's cheaper to consolidate into one building. Greg and I talked through some of the, some, some questions this afternoon. One of them is, is it cheaper to have one single building or a concession stand and a, a separate field house? So, and he, he told me it's probably a hundred thousand or so cheaper to combine it into one building because you're not building outside walls. They're, they're much, much more inside walls. Some of the finishes that you can use are a little cheaper. If I'm, if I'm not stating this correctly, you guys jump in here. So it is cheaper to consolidate it into, into one building. And so when we started designing that, to answer your question, Mr. BA, if there, if there was a, if there was a misunderstanding, it was my misunderstanding. So that's when we started designing. We still have the option of creating a separate concession stand and a field house. But again, I think it's going to be more expensive because you're building two buildings, all with outside walls. And it's also, you know, one of the things, I've got to say, just one of the, one of the factors for me, because the field house and the concession stand is something that is going to be a display for our district. We're going to have hundreds of people come through here every year, and they're going to sit in the stands and they're going to look over. They're going to look at our facilities, and they're going to look at the field house. Field house is going to be something they're going to see. They're going to go to the concession stand. So I'd like for our field house to not just be functional, but to look good, attached or look good close to our field. So that when people come to our district, they see a nice structure, something that was designed where it looks like it's going to fit. If we have a separate field house and a concession stand, I'm afraid it's going to, it's, it's going to look a little less purposeful because you're going to have one building here in the front blocking the building to, to the rear. And it's just, I, I think it'll look better just to have one solid, one single structure. And the, the angles, I think that makes it fit the, into the field a little better, and it, it looks a little more purposeful there. Now, we do have the, the structure, the, the second plan is a, a flat rectangular plan without the angles.
Is that the current approved plan?
No, no. The current approved plan is just a concession stand.
Yeah, that was just the concession stand. Yeah, that was just the concession stand. So this, which the, the basic structure of the concession stand is, is still in there. It's just got field house around it. So there is still some options here if we want to talk through this. But, you know, this, this was just, so if there was misunderstanding on planning, that was my misunderstanding because we worked through this, looking at it to be one building.
So you said location when you started this? What do you mean by that?
North side of the field, just where, where we decided the concession stand is going to be.
Which was voted on last time.
For the concession stand. But there's been, there's been some, some discussion about the field house and other places.
I'm trying to make sure everybody's listening is on the same page here because we did, we did say some things to the community, so they, they understand what they're getting.
Yes. So keep, so keep asking questions so I can try and clarify.
So like last month, we're thinking we're going to be crushed to get this built for football season this coming year.
Yes.
Now, now it's not happening.
I, I think even last, last month, if we were going to try and build that, as I remember even the meeting, we talked about the fact that it was getting to the point where we couldn't, it was, the, the idea of having it for next football season was starting to, to fade.
It wasn't faded.
What's that?
It wasn't faded.
It wasn't faded.
Starting to fade.
Starting to fade. It wasn't faded. No, you're right. It hadn't sunsetted.
So what's an estimate on timing then?
You know, our, I think for, to get the building built, let's say by, by August, you know, we would probably have to have construction plans finished about within the next couple of weeks.
And there's Christmas and New Year, so that's not going to happen.
But they would have been finished if we were to win long with where we were.
Possibly.
Possible.
If we carried on.
So, you know, so the chance of getting done probably in time for football tournament, I think, I think we passed that.
And that includes the demolition of the existing concession stand.
And what was talked about last was that if we, if we started to build something and it took longer than what before football season started, that there would be temporary restroom set up and temporary concession set up. Discussion was kind of.
The possibility of that. I brought that up. People have nice areas, rollaways. They don't have to be the, or the body we all think of in construction.
And unlike the south side location, we have a pretty good handle on the costs for this building on the north side because we've already looked at utilities. We've already looked at a lot of the other considerations that we were, but we, when we decided we were maybe moving into the south, we were going to have to deal with some things that I thought were unknown.
You say this building, building.
Well, this, 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 the new plan, yeah.
Yeah, I think that, you know, that either one of these buildings, I think, are real similar in cost. You know, they're real similar in the same square footage. And the, the concession, you know, is basically around two thousand square feet. And we're trying to hold it to the concession restrooms and then have the field house and weight room and all that be around twelve thousand. So the total is, we're, we're trying to hold that around fourteen thousand square feet or just a hair, you know, under to hit that budget. So, you know, as far as this hitting the budget, we feel good about this, you know, hitting our budget of four point eight million, around that, I think of what the estimate was. And, you know, I think if we, you know, went forward on designing this, which is the, the field house and the concession, you know, that's probably going to take now, like, three to four months maybe to get a design, get all of this design before we're putting out the bid. So construction in this building, I can.
Does your four point eight, Greg, does your four point eight include your parking lot?
Include the parking lot. And, you know, and if we put this out, I think we could come up with options on, on finishes for the interior, you know, and on the exterior to try and hit our budget. And based on whatever the budget ended up, you know, chosen for this building, it would probably, you know, because the, the square footage for, for the parking and anything like that, I think would, basically, we would have the cost of this building and be able to figure out exactly how many parking spaces, a road, you know, with, you know, some, a road behind it and try to make, you know, it allowed.
And to say this out loud then, Greg, this, this keeps us within the original bond proposal?
I believe that's right, yes.
Do you have any renderings of this? Probably not. Like, elevation?
You know, you know, we, we haven't gone to do anything at this point. We're just really seeing if this is in the direction we should be going. Is that really the right statement? Is that really the right statement? But I think, but we're, I think the budget.
So regardless of what we do here tonight, we've already missed the, the deadline on having the concession stand ready to go.
If we were to, the approved, the approved concession stand that we, that we, I mean, put this out on the table, the approved concession stand that we approved last, last meeting, if we went forward with those, with those plans, could that have been done before the football season?
I don't think that's something that could be said absolutely. If they went real well and the weather went real well, maybe a possibility of that making that happen. I don't think I can tell you that.
But with this design, we're saving a hundred thousand dollars over what two, the two separate structures should be.
You know, with the, be around that, between those two.
Hostman guarantee, somewhere.
Unfortunately, I don't think that's, it's definitely what's going to happen in the future.
There is no guarantee.
Steel's going to drop half its price.
Well, I was more a little worried about location. I was worried about parking lot too, but I was more worried about location, moving location to the south side of the field and getting into some things we maybe didn't quite have a good handle on. Same thing with remodeling projects, most of them. They tend to run the costs up.
If you understand your question. I think the south is, the south ends out in picture.
Yeah, but the point goes to anything else we may do here. We should have a pretty good handle on costs. So I'm trying to hold it to a hundred thousand.
Well, we're already saving sixty-five thousand by not putting it.
On the south side.
So, so technically, we've saved sixty-five, saved a hundred. I mean, a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars we can spend maybe on a girls locker room or, you know, somewhere else.
Can these funds be moved indoors and on their athletic facility?
I don't think so. I think, I think the, these funds can only be used on this building, on the concession stand and field house in this building.
With the locker rooms and stuff, we're in the other.
But that's, but they are in the other, the other, other bond. They're attached to the high school.
Well, just basically, that money can be used somewhere else in this. If we need to add some extra space or do some.
Right, and it'd be good to have some cash as we move along.
So, 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 right. That's where I think, if we're, if, if, if we're going to save money or if costs are being saved, they're probably going to go to parking spaces. It is, I, I would think that whatever we can save, whatever extra money we're going to have, since it can only be used on this building or athletic facilities, will probably be more parking that we, we could have. I would, I would guess that's probably what we'd want to do, at least the parties there. Mr. President, you have any thoughts?
Not yet.
Greg, I, I would probably say at this point too, I, I think for me, I would just say that we look at what, and I know it's a different phase, but for the, for the project that we're going to do in the locker rooms on the other end, just to make sure that however, we're going to lay that part of it out, kind of works hand in hand with what we're doing here. I don't have a problem with this here, but I just want to make sure that whatever changes we do to the current facilities we have, to the boys' and girls' locker room there, that we still have enough space. Because what I've heard is that we don't have enough space right now for the kids.
Yeah.
And, and I think doing this facility away from the school and then the facilities that we have, I think there's plenty of room, hopefully. You know, of course, we took a tour of it this evening. And so my concern would just be, let's make sure we have our ducks in a row for the stuff that's inside the school so that when we do build this, that, that we've got sufficient space to how we all are here, boys and girls.
Agreed, agreed.
Do we have, and this is a question for, for Greg and for Josh, just your opinion. This is an uneducated person looking at these drawings and seeing a massive area of the boys' side and a little corner for the girls' side. Do we have Title IX issues there specific to this location, or are they addressed with expansion in the building itself? Does that balance things out better?
I, I'll, I'll address that just real quickly on some, on just some quick thoughts on that. I don't think we'll have a Title IX issue. For one thing, the boys' locker room, this is going to be a football locker room. Football team has sixty to sometimes eighty kids on it. So you have to have a locker room large enough for that. All of the other girls' spaces, though, they need to be bigger and they need to be much better. You don't have to have the size of the, of the locker room for a football team or the girls' basketball team or the volleyball team, things like that. So I, I don't think we would end up with a Title IX issue because each of the spaces is appropriate for the size or the type of the team that is going to be playing there. I think we would end up with a Title IX issue if we created this wonderful space for our football team and did nothing for the inside for the girls' locker rooms, et cetera. We need to make those spaces just as useful, roomy, nice as we would this space here. Josh, do you have anything to add on that?
When we make the move over to this complex, we will open a girls' locker room in the old complex. It's just going to happen naturally. Like, the two, the, the varsity and JV football locker rooms you walk through, ideally those become a varsity boys' and varsity girls' locker room for basketball. And then we kind of work everything out. So it's going to open up more locker rooms. But that makes it. And we're going to actually be, we'll meet everything we need for Title IX.
Okay, it does. I just wanted everyone to hear that.
So are we keeping in mind using a similar type of finishing materials here and in the remodel? Do you need to do that in mind?
As far as quality or?
And also for continuity, and this is, we have people coming here, but we're going to have teams using those locker rooms to make sure that we use the same quality in this new construction that we use in the remodel.
I don't think we've gone through, to be honest. We haven't really set through phase three.
I know we haven't.
Of the remodel on that, but it, like, ideally, what we have there is hopefully going to be remodeled and look just as nice as what.
Yes.
That's what I was saying. That's what I was saying. I, I, exactly.
As we walk through today, there's a lot we see that need to be upgraded. I mean, and we're going to try to put the best product we can out there for all of our kids.
But just as they're making the budget, they need to know that we're, you know, both places, like, if you don't think it's going to be, the money's going to be there in phase three. I don't want to cut that short. I want it all to be perfect, amazing, wonderful, but I don't want to run out of money for anybody. And it's not our money. There's nobody in this room's money. It's the taxpayer's money. It's the school district's money. It is the future student's money.
Yes.
And their facilities. And I want to give the best opportunities for the girls', the boys', future sports, whatever is going on, but, you know.
I think that's, I think that's all of our goal.
It is, yeah.
And that's what, as we're pushing through phase three and as we're pushing through this field house, the goal is, let's give the best that we can to our kids with being in financial burden that, you know, that we're, we're setting.
Financial constraint.
Yeah.
I think if we're behind the eight ball already on the field house, I think kind of like what Noon said, need to make sure we're evaluating, get everything inside the school first before we dive off onto another deal for new construction. And like a lot of the voters have voted for the bond, the school's sixty years old, but make sure we're remodeling all six, all of it at sixty years old and not just leave some of it and then build a whole new facility. Which I'm not against, but I want to make sure we're getting everything else covered inside before we.
Which is two separate buckets.
It's a separate money.
What you said.
It's a separate money.
But if, if we, if we keep waiting, if we keep waiting, all we're going to do is push back further. Instead of building at two years, now we're going to be at three years or four years. Like, we have to, we, we have to make a decision here and then go also to phase three in designing that.
Well, we already pushed the concession stand back a month that would have got finished, or that could have had a potential to get finished. So I'd rather spend the money and make sure we know what we're doing. Because like even in a few of the things on phase three, like we talked about at the west side of the Ranger at, if we go through with what's in the plans right now, we're going to have to redo a basketball court and basketball goals. And so I think before we. if we go through with what's in the plans right now, we're gonna have to redo a basketball court and basketball goal. And so I think before we continue, and especially with something new now, we need to make sure we have our ducks in a row on what we have in there first to know what we need out here.
I think building this would tell us what we need in there. By by getting this built, then we know what we need inside because we know what we have out here. Do what?
And I just look at it for dinner.
I'll say, let me say this, just from coaches and end user perspective. This facility is, I know we hired this guy to hire that guy, and we've got to trust those people who met with those guys to come up with this plan. You said that we hire and fire that guy earlier. So we've got to trust him to trust these other people, and they presented something in front of us that I think it looks pretty good. I know they've spent the time to go through the usability of how it's gonna work, and he's thought a lot, a lot about the flow of how the athletic programs will flow through this facility. I think we need to go ahead and move its separate money inside and outside of separate money. My opinion is that we go ahead and vote on this and get construction moving so that we can show the people that voted for the bond that, hey, we're doing something instead of we're sitting in here talking. So.
Did you have some parliamentary things you wanted to do, Wes?
If it is the board's consensus that they want to move on to something beyond what we passed last month, there is a process for doing for doing that. Takes a motion to reconsider. The motion is made by one of the, the five two votes, one of the five, one of the four left because I can't make the motion. One of the four that voted for the motion to accept plan number seven, motion to reconsider. If that motion passes, then number seven is back on the on the floor for a vote, yea or nay. At that point in time, that motion can be made again and voted down, which then opens the pathway for eleven and twelve.
So can we, I have a few comments still about these. I don't feel ready to vote on this. We don't have a front. I'm not saying there's anything wrong with these, but this is the first time we've seen them and this is a million dollars.
If we're going to move ahead with this bond.
With this plan specifically.
There will, we will come out of this meeting with a plan.
Okay, well, then in that case, here's my two cents.
Wait a minute. Wait a minute. We can't even, I don't even want to discuss any of this until we go back and see if it's even an option.
Yeah, that's what I was just getting ready to say. We're not even up for discussion on on anything on this.
Unless we back out of the approach.
Because because right now, we have a plan already approved. We approved the minutes that included that plan.
That's why you're the boss.
I think the delays are regrettable, but I would make a motion that we rescind plan number.
Reconsider.
Reconsider.
Reconsider the motion to approve.
The motion to approve plan number seven.
Is there a second? And that second would come from one of the people, could only come from one of the people who voted for plan number seven.
The one that just just concession, just a concession with no with no field house on. The one that you're you're gonna put at the south end, the long and skinny. Would you cost us a hundred thousand dollars more to?
To do separately.
Without the field house tied to it at all. Just just the concession stand. That's what we approved last.
Yeah.
It'd be moved and seconded to reconsider the motion to approve floor plan number seven and place it at the north side of the field, which was, I believe, how the motion read. There is not a discussion, if I remember correctly, on a motion to reconsider. All in favor to reconsider the motion?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries six, one.
Go ahead, sir.
So now.
Okay, now I'm gonna talk about this.
No, no.
No.
Do this one exactly right. Before we can have a discussion on this motion, I'd like to have a motion on the floor. We're gonna follow the rules on this one. Rather than having discussion before, we have a motion on the court.
You need an A or a B, President, on these two?
Eleven.
Eleven or twelve, honey? I need I need an eleven or a twelve.
Proposing concessions and field house for plan number twelve with some consideration.
And the dollars are relatively the same on these two designs?
Yeah.
Thank you.
The dollars, but the square footage is not.
The dollar amount is a little different on the ones with the angles. The angles will cost a little bit more, but it's a negative, maybe what, less than ten thousand?
It was a little, less than.
Less than ten thousand dollars.
Almost the same. The five just costs a little bit more for for the structure.
Make a motion to approve.
One on the floor.
A motion on the floor, I'm sorry. To approve number twelve, but we do not have a second for number twelve. Seeing none, the motion dies for lack of a second. Chair would entertain any other motion the board would like to make.
I'll make a motion to approve floor plan number eleven.
I'll second.
Move the second to approve for plan number eleven. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Now's your shot.
Okay. I dislike this plan specifically because of the, while it may only cost a little bit more, you waste more space in awkward angles in usability. It may, and it looks nicer.
According to the people that designed it.
Okay, but they're on this.
That are gonna use it every day.
Good for them.
You're not gonna use it every day.
There is dead space in this corner. There is dead space in this corner.
Be used. I guarantee you it will be used.
But not as efficiently as the ten squares and rectangles.
Where's the dead space?
Also, the women's bathroom is terrible.
Where's the dead space?
There's dead space.
Those are locked all the way around.
Yeah, not all the way around. And this area in here, all these awkward angles, the women's bathroom is terrible. I will not vote for this plan. The women's bathroom is terrible. The other one, they're even, they're equal, you scooped. And I can't talk about the other one for the intent. But I liked the other one better. The bathrooms are more functional, they're even, you can take, I don't like the hallway in the middle of this, it's wasted space between concessions and Ranger Hut. If this is what we do, I would like to remove that hallway in less than a emergency exit thing and just move that wall between the concessions and Ranger Hut together in case Ranger Hut ever becomes storage for concession and not functional anymore. That would be my one alteration on this plan. And I would like to swap as the women's bathroom layout is not good.
Can you tell me, can you give me more information on that?
Yeah, I like the layout in the other one better. It's not weird. And there's a lot of open dead space in there, which is fine, but it's wasted space there in the middle of women's restroom. That's too much empty floor space. Empty floor space here when you come down this hallway. It just makes things wider, but it is less efficient. Walls that are straight and rectangular are more efficient for furniture, bodies, weight rooms, squares, units that we may have a whole little triangle over here that you cannot fit a weight room station in, another weight station. It's not drawn in there. It doesn't look like it'll fit. So they use that more efficiently in these other places.
They could use it for storage.
Possibly the weight room is not used for.
For storing weights.
For storing weights.
The full dumbbells.
And also store them, you can store them around the edge in a square room just as easily.
In my opinion, this looks, this is much more aesthetically pleasing from the outside.
They needed two more weight stations. They could have been two more weight stations.
It is a square building. Colleges have square rectangular buildings with nice façades that look really nice. It's a difficult, a different shape. It's harder to outfit, harder to maneuver around. It's just busier. So I personally do not like this plan compared to a more straightforward one in the other one.
I think this stays within the guidelines of what we ask the our community to support. So I'd be in fa, I'd be in favor of this particular plan.
Mr. Brown, which you were on the committee that looked at this, which of these two renderings did you guys like the most?
They're very similar, the square and the the angles. I would say, and you guys are correct me wrong, I'd say the ones with the angles were were favored a little more. Me, and partly because that's gonna, it seems to fit a track and a football field a little better, just as far as the looks and the aesthetics of it. It does, when it comes to design, Sarah has a good point. Sometimes angles can be difficult to deal with. I think in this building, every place where there are some angles, those spaces will be used. If you take a look at the weight room, you brought up the weight room. If you're in a weight room, you've got to have a place to store your balls, your dumbbells, your spare weights. That store, that could be the area over there where they store the weights and they store the the implements. There can also be two extra stations. I think that the room is going to be used. I just think it adds, this adds a little character to our building. I think it'll be aesthetically pleasing when when people look at it. I also, and and just to bring up a point, and I'll just, I'd like to say this at least because I thought this was a great example. Do you mind if I share your story that you told me about your new building, Greg? Okay, so Greg and I were talking about this, and we were talking about how when you when you create a new building and you make it look good and make you make it a a nice space, how it makes a difference. And he mentioned they've been remodeling their building for about two years now.
About a year, a little under.
You're a little under. They've they've made it into a very nice space. I was down there for a meeting about four or five minutes ago. It's really, really nice. But he was relating to me how it makes a difference when he walks into work every day, that he actually thinks he he works better. And he, it makes him feel better about doing his job when he walks in. I know aesthetics, aesthetics are optional. But I think when you when you look at something and aesthetically, it looks like it fits, it looks like it functions, I think you have a better opinion of the way, let's just for this for this building, you'll have a better opinion of the way the district functions. You'll have a better opinion of how the district is gonna perform. You'll have a better opinion of how we do our business. When kids walk into a building that looks good and it looks like it's supposed to be there, they're going to, I think they're gonna actually perform better because they're going to take pride in what they're doing, they're gonna take pride in walking in. So back to your, back to your question, Bryce, the the committee, when we talked about this, I think we favored the angles. Am I, am I wrong, gentlemen? We we were. Yeah.
Yeah, I I say we go with the angles. Some of the stuff that has been mentioned, like angle on the weight room, I mean, I've gotta have a dumbbell rack to store my dumbbells. I've gotta have, I've gotta have weight trees to store my weights. That's easy. That area is really easy to fill. The way that we have the locker room laid out there, even in the corner shade, it's real easy. And and what we're trying to do with the flow of the stadium, still with plan eleven. I mean, the book that on the end of the of the build right there and for us to look at from our home stands at that angled field house, it's it's a better design and look for I I think what we're trying to put together now.
So the hole between the concession and Ranger Hut is just access to the rest of the building from the south?
I think that's that's.
Right, where you don't have to go to the east or west to get into.
That's to, yeah, I think that was designed mainly in there to give people access to the concession stand without having to go through the main part of the field house.
The argument that I've made me personally is in a concession stand and and field house, a concession stand in a hut, when we decided we were gonna go this route, there's people that need to be in the concession stand in the hut that don't need to be in our field house. I'm just gonna be on.
So you lock the door to the.
You make it secure.
Yes.
You make it secure so you keep those people out that don't need to be in there, you know what I mean?
Nobody needs.
Yeah, so that's the idea is, you know, great, these people are gonna volunteer to work the concession stand, but you don't also, you don't need to be in our locker room, you don't need to be in our weight room. Same thing with who's gonna work in the hut, you don't need to be in our field house. Like, so it's a security type deal that we're looking at.
So you're gonna send the opposing team to the current lockers?
Over, we're gonna send them over there on the east side, and we're gonna go to the west side.
Okay, you're sending them to the east side to in into our current building?
No.
No. They're gonna come in here.
They're gonna come in here.
But they'll go to like girls' soccer.
We're gonna utilize those east locker rooms for visitors.
The cross country slash track and field.
So those will be, those will be locked up. You see what I'm saying? We're gonna send them to the east. We're gonna have locks on there that's gonna be locked up. They're gonna utilize that. And then we're gonna utilize the west side over there.
And that'll be enough. Those are gonna be big enough for a football team.
Yeah. With with one, yeah. When you bring one and they're gonna use both, we'll have no problem.
I do like the fact that the referee doesn't have a door on here. You lock them in. That's my favorite part of it. I don't like.
I think we, you know, I've talked with Mr. Brown a lot too, but what we've decided to do is is unique. I I I'm just being honest with you. I've talked to a lot of people. Nobody puts a concession with the with a field house.
I take that back. The original bond did.
Right, right.
Yes.
Other points.
The one that was put proposal on my, so we tried to make it the best that we can with what we voted on. Plan eleven is the best that we can make it with what we've decided to do in putting a concession with a field house.
Well, I think for me, you got it, you know, I I go to all the home football games. You know, one thing that this does do is not just doesn't just block a north wind, it'll block a northeast wind and a northwest wind. You know, that's kind of my favorite thing about it. But I'd be okay with the weather.
I would say if there's a possibility of getting the bathroom to the weight session stand that way, just everybody hitting all lined up together, if that was possible. Just whether or not, right, where all the lines are right there in the center. But I mean, I mean, it looks good. I mean.
I think you're, I think you're gonna be, that's twenty foot apart there, right?
Definitely. And you could, and I really think, you know, Mr. Brown talked a little bit about moving it around, like even if we say we want to move the bathrooms to the that east corner over there, and we're gonna bump the laundry and we're gonna bump the 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 red part on it. Like, no problem, we could easily do that. You know what I mean?
We'll get flash putting the bathrooms.
True.
It does, that is awkward. I I don't like that low bodies, especially to the.
No, could you move the coaches closer? Because I mean, really, the, I don't know, but you got your varsity locker rooms over here. You'd be closer there. I was gonna say, put them closer to the school, but.
Could you flop it? Would it? Is it the same if you mirror it and flip it around the other way?
Well, if the home side was coming out of the east side.
Oh, yeah, the football team, and then they.
Right, right. Yeah.
But yeah, the bathroom, laundry, referee.
And just to, just because Mr. Bill brought up the previous bond, just so that you guys know, because I've done some checking on this. This is smaller than what what was in the original bond. This is a little, this, this the structure, right, the structure is a little bit smaller, it's a little bit more efficient. It's not, e- even though it's this big shake, it looks huge. This is smaller than the original proposal. So we're we're trying to be stable.
It's to meet our money.
Clear, smaller needs according to the end user.
Yes.
Other comments? Is there or have?
Is there, or has there been any thought, this is just one of those weird things that pops into my head? So, y'all. Grab on to something. In the event of any kind of severe weather, if we were moving fans somewhere undercover?
Any storm shelter possibilities?
Any grant money available, being the type stuff to make certain portions of this building meet certain specifications, those types of things?
The only grant money that I, I looked into that at one point, there was a, there was a grant that was going to be out there. For, I think we even discussed this at one point. For creating a storm shelter. The last I checked on this, they opened it back up, but the, the group that was doing it, I'm just, I'm, I'm drawing blank on names. It was one of the local emergency, emergency agencies, and they had contacts, it was a government grant. But it didn't look like there was gonna be enough funds that we were gonna qualify. Or, or it was gonna be a pretty long shot if we were gonna get any grant.
Weird things that local.
Yeah, that's, no, it's a good thought.
Grants are awesome if you can find them.
That's right. And if we were gonna access one now, it's a time to access it.
Yeah.
I can check on that, and I can see if there's, if that's still out there, if they, if they think they're in the same situation as they were a couple months ago. Hazard mitigation, right?
Pressure was added.
Yeah.
Other questions, other discussions?
So the budget for Part B, is that, we're putting all that just on the building, or is that leaving that 700 for the?
Still can do the parking. With parking, it's parking, and, no, 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 it's the budget for, for the B part of the bond is for this building and parking, it's for athletic facilities.
So this is like 4.1?
The goal would be to, if this is in some budget, whatever we left over would be.
Even standing here at 4.1, and, you know, let, let's just say, let's just say we don't find any good deals out there and we have to, to go on max budget for this one. What'd you, what'd you say, about a hundred spaces roughly?
I would be hoping, you know, it would be at least a hundred, but I think, you know, maybe a hundred fifty space.
And, and with bidding out, I mean, I would think that you guys, if I'm reading your, your thoughts right, right now. After we bid this out, money that we have left over or isn't as much could go to more parking. Since it has to be spent on this building or parking in general. But we can make that decision.
Anything else? Last chance, go once, go twice? Seeing no other discussion, all in favor of floor plan number 11? Raise your right hand. All opposed? Motion carries six, one.
Thank you, guys.
Next item on the agenda. Consideration and possible action on purchase of additional lighting for the junior high auditorium.
Um, we've discussed this in, uh, in the past, I wanna bring this back to you guys. We discussed it some time ago. We have a space in our district that I think is one of our best meeting spaces. It's, it's, uh, comfortable. Holds enough for a big group, but we can't use it because it's too dark. A, a couple of, about a month ago, one of our local churches had a, or several of our churches got together to have a speaker there, and I was there. And you could barely, you really just couldn't see the guy who was speaking, he was standing on the floor. So I, so the, the space is really not very usable right now, it's our junior high auditorium, because it's so dark. I think it would be one of our, with, with this addition. And all we would be doing was it would be installing some house lights to make it bright enough that people could hold meetings in there, and they could still, they could see the speaker, they could still see their notes. It's something that, you know, and I'm, I'm not exactly sure why, um, if there was a specific decision that those lights weren't install, installed. But, um, with the lights installed, one of our most underutilized spaces, I think will become one of our most utilized spaces. I know that most of the, most of the time when we, most of the time that, that we're choosing right now, that I'm choosing to hold meetings in the high school auditorium, I'll wanna hold some of those at the junior high. Uh, because it's, for one thing, it is a smaller space. If you try to hold a meeting in the high school auditorium in that huge space, and it's not enough to cover it, it's, it's a little bit awkward. I just think this is something, it's a small thing that would make a really big improvement on our buildings. Um, we do have the money in our budget right now to be able to manage this. Uh, full disclosure, you know, this, this is coming from a budget that is for repairs and, and doing extra things, you know, buildings, uh, in our, in our, uh, in our buildings. So later on, if we did end up with a larger emergency, we might have to do a budget amendment and, and use some of our fund balance. But we have the money right now. And I would like, uh, I'd like to try and get this in the works. Get it done so that, uh, even maybe even the spring, we can use the, we could use the junior high auditorium, but definitely towards the end, uh, or towards the beginning of next school year, we can have it done.
Was this a consideration when we redid the junior high, I wasn't on the board at that time? Did we notice this, or is this, um, a new discovery?
Yeah, so. I, I can, you know, we, we did that renovation, and actually when we did, at the end of that, actually, I brought it up myself, and I didn't, I thought it needed a little additional light in there for the house. And we actually came up with a plan, we got a price put together, and we put it to the superintendent at the time.
It did not make it to the board.
You remember this?
Sometimes I thought it was a little bit harder.
I do have a question from a bidding standpoint on this. Hurts from a couple of local electricians. What, for a project like this, walk me through how bids are, are received, whether they be bids from a mere, or local bids?
So let me address it right quick, because the last time I talked to you guys about this, I was asked to go ahead and put it out to bid and see what some of our local electricians wanna do. We did, advertised it in the paper. Uh, we opened it up with the specs. We had no responders to the bids. And, and I'm not gonna speak for our local electricians, but I think, um, Peyton and Greg have been talking with them. They've got quite a few projects right now. I think there's some stuff going on at the courthouse, I'm not sure that they. Yeah, city hall, and, um, I'm just not sure they have the capacity to take on an extra project, and that may be why they didn't respond. But normally, if we have a, a project like this, we come up with the specs, we'll put it out to, we'll advertise it in the paper, we'll put it out to our, our local people. Um, and to see if we have to count on them to respond. And this one, we did put it in the paper, uh, they didn't respond, no, no responses.
You tell us the difference in the two lights, because we can't read them.
Okay, yeah, so there you go.
The, uh, basic proposal, what was that LA lighting fixture? It's the, uh, least costly of the two. It's a, your square fixture, you might not be trying to close it. Put down the ceiling, it's not gonna be really something a lot of the time. You have the, uh, exterior trim in a variety of colors, I believe, the 12,000 lumens, and it's, uh, on off mobile controls.
And how much does that add to our current lumens?
I'm not sure from the engineering side of things, I can get, Joseph has an analysis.
It'll be noticeable to everybody using it.
One thousand to about forty-eight thousand.
I think it was somewhere, yeah. I have to check with them.
Yeah, and also one thing is that the ceiling in the inner has a little bit of that.
Yes.
That is made. Everything gets worked on in there, we have, you know, the, that's just kind of.
What's the price include here?
It includes the prices.
Okay.
So, what, what this, what this includes, yes, what this includes is having, you know, just got the layout. And, 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 and do whatever you've done through their, uh, containers, in the lead, in the search amount. But you gotta go a little more, you gotta get that. So it's.
Originally, when we tested that, when we did our evaluation in there, the, the samples, if you come over two percent of, if the sample they take, if it's over two percent, it's precious, they have to consider it as precious. Most of the samples came in under, but it just, some came in over. So it's, basically, sort of, you know, all that pressure. So, it wasn't the end of the market, and that's it.
And then can you tell us off camera?
Yeah, the mixture is actually quite a little costly. It's, uh, I believe it's a little bit less on the lube, that looks a little bit nicer, it's the round, the round fixture.
How big is it?
It's proof of dynamo. Follow that one too. But, um, you can see the, the color, it's a little rounded, it's like that. For house lighting, you know, it, it's just sort of saying, the same function as panel would improve, but for utility and house lighting.
Peyton and I talked about those different lights, and although I do like the round look, it just, they were so much more expensive. And we talked about the frame, the, um, the square lights. I think it comes in a white, but we talked about getting those painted, so that, and it's gonna be at the, it's gonna be in the ceiling, so it should, it should fade into the ceiling pretty well.
This is an all-in-one, replace the whole thing from the short term.
It's, it's a LA, so you can replace the driver if the driver goes bad, which I know Alan put a lot of bits on the link. But if this one passed out, it's the whole, that's about anything. The picture is all visible. Yes.
Yeah.
They both are, or just that one?
They both are, and it'll be visible from the sound, so it's not like we're gonna have a, a long.
Is this something you want to do this year because Brittany's taking this piece and taking away $400,000 from us, sort of?
You gotta find it to not spend.
I, I would like to this year. I think it'll, I, I think we'll end up with the money to. And again, I think it's, ever since I came. It's just something I've had in the back of my mind, because I think this little change will greatly change how much we can use that. Both for kids and for staff and for the community.
Sixteen eighty-three.
Do you wanna answer that, Brittany? You can.
I hope so.
You can, you can, you can shout us down right now. Are you comfortable doing this?
Lights, you're comfortable with lights?
The lights and the turf in the same year? Yeah, the lights is tiny compared to the turf. The turf's tiny as well.
We, we ended up, we end up spending less on the turf, or having to make up less than we thought we were going to. Yeah. Okay, yeah.
We've been laying money back for a long time on that.
Yeah, and we ended up only having to bring in, what, like thirty thousand dollars instead of the sixty we thought we were gonna have? Yeah.
Other questions?
You can say square light.
Square. Square lights are base project budget? But, motion to approve the base project budget line?
One more question?
Would entertain a motion?
Motion to approve base project budget line, but, wait, additional lighting for the junior high or grand?
Is there a second?
Second.
Move to second to approve the proposal for the additional lighting in the junior high auditorium. Base project budget of thirty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars and zero cents. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries five, two. Let's, uh, take a look at our calendar first before we go back into closed session. January the twentieth would be the date that shows up on the calendar for our next regular meeting. What's everybody's calendar look like for the twentieth?
What's the school calendar look like? No, nothing, no lack of school events.
It is.
It is.
Monday is the King Day, and we do, we have, we do have school that day.
Cheering and getting arrested or something.
Probably celebrating your.
After the meeting, after the meeting.
That's right.
Should we have a lunch meeting?
I don't show anything on the school's calendar.
Monday, the twentieth. It is a federal holiday, correct?
It is a federal. We are in school.
Hey, Jed? Debating given to Superintendent Brown.
That's my Christmas gift, right?
It could be. Since you're so generous with the ones I've been getting.
Okay. Looks fine, my script again. Get the correct wording. Board will now convene in a closed meeting to discuss the following items post our agenda this evening, as allowed by Texas Government Code 551.074, Superintendent Evaluation. No voting will take place in a closed meeting, any action the board wishes to take as a result of discussion in closed session will take place after the board reconvenes an open meeting. It is now nine forty-two.